Good evening, folks. Welcome to the City of Lowell zoning board of appeals public hearing for November 22nd. Just a few housekeeping matters. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, please turn it off or put it on silent. Also, this meeting will occur in person in the chambers and also online via Zoom virtually as well. And you can also watch this on LTC live. Going into continued business, ZBA-2021-48 variance. The applicant is Linda Te, property located at 46 Wood Street. Linda Te seeking a variance approval at 46 Wood Street. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing single-family home and construct a 1,600-square-foot commercial structure with a rear parking area. The subject property is located in the regional retail zoning district. The applicant requires variance approval per section 6.1.10 for relief from the minimum driveway width requirement and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Is there... Is there an applicant for that petition here tonight? Oh, good evening. Sorry, you want to just state your name and address for the record?
Sure. For the record, my name is Brian Malisi with Whitman Abingham Associates, here representing the property owners of 46 Wood Street. If I may, Mr. Chair, just approach, just to put my poster board on the easel and hand out a small scale portion of... If you need me to walk up to the board during my presentation, I certainly can do that. But what I have is just a crudely colored portion, colored plan that was included in the, in the submittal package for the project, and an 11 by 17 of the architectural plan that was also submitted as part of that submittal package. Again, as you read into the record, the property is located at 46 Wood Street. It's located in the regional retail zoning district. Property itself is fairly small in size. It's a little over 7,000 square feet, and the width of the property is only 50 feet wide. What we're here tonight asking from this board is relief from section 6.1.10, which is the driveway regulations. The code says that a minimum width of a driveway for two-way traffic should be 20 feet wide. We're asking for relief to allow an 18-foot-wide driveway to access the property. As you can see on the plan, we've kind of laid it out such that we meet all other dimensional regulations within the zoning district. We call for a 1,600-square-foot building, which will house retail use. This, this district itself doesn't have very many property line offset regulations. It's really zero offsets except for the rear. The rear has a 40-foot offset to it. We show, currently show a little over 50-foot offset to the rear. As you can see how it lays out, we have the 18-foot-wide driveway shown and the parking shown, which is three and a half feet off of the property lines, which again is called for in the code. We show a five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk around the edge of the building, which again is reflected in the architectural drawings, you know, really to provide a safe haven for pedestrians or customers of the property coming off, to have a safe place to go with the 18-foot-wide driveway. Obviously, a building of this size isn't going to be a large generator of traffic, so we do feel the 18-foot-wide width provides for safe egress into and out of the property. Again, we do meet all other dimensional regulations, and if you would be with me, Mr. Chair, I can read into the record the three variance requirements that we included in our submittal letter.
Yeah, go ahead. That's fine.
So the first is a, is a special hardship owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures but not affecting generally the zoning district. Again, you heard me say at the very beginning of my very quick presentation, but due to the sub, the width of the subject lot, providing a 20-foot-wide driveway here really starts to take up a lot of the width of the lot. We either have to shift the building closer to one of the property lines, or reduce some of that sidewalk that we have in and around the building. So we really do think that the shape of the lot, the variance is required due to the shape of the, of the lot. Public good, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. It's our opinion that desirable relief can be granted without detriment. The proposed width of the driveway is large enough to provide safe egress onto the public way. Therefore, it does not create a hazardous situation. The proposal, the proposal provides for a new retail building that will meet all current building codes while removing a pre-existing non-conforming use, which was the single-family residence. If anybody has gone by, fairly recently, the house has actually been razed and hopefully in paving the way for this proposal. Finally, the intent of the zoning should be satisfied without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the zoning. In this instance, the proposed use is allowed within the underlying zoning district, and so the zoning relief can be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the zoning. Again, as I mentioned before, the applicant is provided for safe driveway egress onto the public way while still taking into account the dimensional standards of typical parking spaces in the current zoning code. Also stated previously, the proposal provides for a new retail building that'll meet all current codes while removing the pre-existing non-conforming. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I know I was very quick, but I can answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation, sir. If you have nothing else, we'll open up to the, the public portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this project? In favor, yeah, go ahead, ma'am. If you want to just step up to the podium and your name, address for the record, and whatever you'd like to share with the, with us.
My name is Kathleen Hansen, and I live at 4947 Columbia Street, where your parking lot's going to go, up at my backyard. I'm wondering, are we putting a fence up there, a stockade fence, and the lighting? Back a couple of years ago, a couple doors down, they put a dentist in, and I didn't really know about coming here, and their light shines right into my bedroom. I have a bedroom on the back wall where that driveway, your parking lot's going to be, and I want to know about lighting and up there.
Mr. Chair?
Just, just one minute, sir. So that's all you have? We'll, we'll address it with the petition in a minute. So that's all you have, ma'am, for comments?
Because it's a bucket, it's my backyard, and I would like not to look at his parking lot. I would like a fence and, like I said, the light.
Okay. All right. Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Before we open up to questions or comments to the board, I'm sorry, do you want to just step up to the podium and just, do you want to talk a little bit about the project in terms of, like fencing and lighting and all that?
Yep. We did receive comments from staff, including some from the engineering department as well, and I believe one of the comments was, as part of the landscaping regulations call for, if we can't, if we can't provide a dense enough green strip, if you will, for landscaping, that that can be substituted by a, by a fence. And staff had mentioned or suggested that we provide a six-foot-high opaque fence, which would mean, you know, not a chain-link fence, that light would go through it, but something opaque, so that it would block headlights and whatnot, and we would certainly be amenable to that condition.
Okay.
Certainly on the rear, where the parking lot is, and along the, the side of the driveway. I do believe the building itself provides for a screen on the, on the right side or plan east, if you will, if looking at that. However, if, if the board suggested or would like to see fencing along that line, we would provide that as well.
Okay.
As far as the lighting goes, it is a fairly small parking lot. It's a fairly small building, so we would not be looking to put in any large, you know, large-scale lighting fixtures. Any type of fixtures would be small residential-scale lamppost-type of thing. However, most of it would probably be lit off the building, the building egresses that call for in the building code. So the lighting itself would be very minimal.
Okay. Perfect. Thank, thank you so much for that clarification and updates, sir. Appreciate it. So now we'll open up questions, comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Procol. Mr. Procol, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think this project is, is a very nice project. Hopefully, with the beautification of, of this property, it would enhance the neighborhood and especially the residents who are concerned about the appearance of, of the, you know, the fencing and so forth. A couple of minor questions. Did you submit anything to the city regarding traffic management?
We have not yet. We did see that comment about a traffic management plan during construction, and again, we would certainly adhere to that condition and provide that information prior to construction of the new building.
Okay. Thank you, because I know that's very dense when it comes to the traffic. There was also a comment about stormwater operations, something you haven't submitted as yet either?
Again, we have not. We've, we've had conversations with the stormwater team. We kind of know what they are looking for, but again, depending on the outcome of this or any other, you know, edicts that we leave here with would certainly have, you know, a direct effect on the stormwater. So what we're looking to try to do, kind of selfishly, would be to see how the, the variance is going to be viewed, and then we would certainly provide those plans. We would go out there, and now that the house is down, we would dig a test pit to get soil types and whatnot, and design that whole system there.
Oh, okay. Perfect. I, I'll leave the rest of the questions to, to the board members, but I, I think, you know, given all the guidelines, if you were to meet them, I think this would be an exceptional project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Procol. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're, you're familiar with the comments from the Department of Planning and Development?
We are.
One quick question to the, the resident who's here this evening. Are you a director butter to the property? Do you prefer a landscaping or a fence?
I like fence. It doesn't, it's my yard.
Did you catch that one? She likes a nice fence. All right. How many parking spaces in the rear of the property?
Proposed as four spaces.
Okay. So you know that because of that, that you are required to have some sort of screening, whether that be of a fence, a wall, or landscaping?
Absolutely.
Okay. You've heard the preference of the madam from Columbia Road, right? Come Columbia Street, excuse me. Hey, I'm trying to help you here, lady.
I'm just, 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 I'm
How many customer base customers going to have if those four parking spots are going to be used up by, um, by, by people who work there, so.
What we tried to do is if you look at the parking counts of the parking regulations, there are certainly different categories of retail, if you will. What we tried to use is the most conservative. You know, some of them have one in fifteen hundred square feet, uh, one space for fifteen hundred square feet. One category has for like a service has one space every sixteen hundred square feet. So I could have sat here and really said, geez, with these four spaces, we could have put up thirty-two hundred square feet. But what we tried to do is say, we tried to use the most restrictive one and say one in, one space in every five hundred square feet. And we provided those four spaces. So again, it wouldn't be an ideal situation, but when the building inspector gets involved at the building permit stage, if one of those uses doesn't really meet what, what they're trying to do, they're going to kick us right back here and ask us, you know, to ask for a variance to the parking. And, and exactly, no, exactly.
I, I understand that, but we're going to be looking at a, no.
Without a doubt.
We're going to look at, looking very tight, at a tight fit there. And we'll have to see what we can do about that when we, I guess we'll address, we can address that if that's the case at that time. But, um, a couple of things too. So on the south side of the property, I'm looking at, you have the green space there that's going up to the, uh, going up to the sidewalk. Um, are there any plans to put possibly put in signage there as far as a stanchion for, because I'm presuming that businesses are going to be there. Signage, there's going to, they're going to want to have some sort of signage to let people know that their business is located there. Um, one of the big things for that is probably going to be a big stanchion that shows, um, that's facing off of Woods, up and down Wood Street to show cars passing. That's where they're located because at this, as it stands right now, you got the property located on the east side facing west. And the only possible signage that would possibly show any passersby will be the one that's, you got designated located at store two on the plans, um, for, to, to find out who, who's there. So what's the, what are the?
More than likely signage will be building mounted and it would meet, it would meet current zoning code, obviously. Otherwise, again, we would be back here in front of you asking to vary the sign code. It is fairly tight. There's only three and a half feet from the edge of the pavement to the property line. Uh, it was very tight. We talked about what type of sign is they going to use. And again, as of, it's my understanding that building, that the signage will be building mounted. And again, uh, you take the, the end of the building as you're driving up and down Wood Street, there is, there was that face that you could, uh, utilize and still have access to signage.
Yeah.
I could come up there, but you know, with the, with the long side of the building stock.
I mean, so, um, how much, so what, so what's the, the length from the corner of the build, the southern portion, portion of the building up to the edge of the, where the sidewalk is? Not to, not to the end of the sidewalk, to that, the green area there that you have on the, the southern green area there that you have on the?
Apparently it's eight and a half feet.
How much? I'm sorry.
From the property line to the edge of the building, it's roughly eight and a half feet.
Eight and a half feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the property line basically exists right on the backside of the sidewalk, if you will. Uh, so there's eight and a half feet. So again, when trying to lay this thing out, we would, we would have room dimensionally speaking zoning code wise to slide that building a little bit forward. But we were trying to be cognizant of not really jumping out onto that front edge and having it too close to Wood Street.
Okay. Cause one of the other concerns I was thinking is there's not much lands, there's not much green space as far as landscaping, as far as possible bushes, trees, which I think when looking at the southern portion of the building that's proposed, um, it would be nice to get some trees in there, but then now you're taking up space for possible signage, also a possible, uh, sight of view coming out of the, coming out of the building. So, um, I think, I would probably like to propose a condition and well, if you want other of my fellow board members think about it, of, uh, working with DPD to possibly as far as landscaping plan, possibly see if we can put either some trees or bushes on the southern edge of the property, um, southern edge of the building, of the property. Um, and you're going to have to work, maybe, maybe that, if you can work with that and then try to work around the possibility of having, uh, stanchion signage there, um, in the future, which I think, it, I think you're really going to have to do anyways, because there's no way anybody's going to know what, I mean, no way that anybody's going to know what businesses are going to be there without any form of signage unless it's just the, the only one that's going to have it is the, you know, store number two on the southern side, which can possibly put signage on, on the side of the building. So, um, that's, um, but other than that, um, that's all I had, um, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, I mean, I, otherwise I think it's a good project. I think it will work. And as long as you're, um, willing to, you know, do the proposed conditions as set forth by DPD as well as the one I just proposed, uh, I think I can be, be in favor of this. So, thank you.
Oh, thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Norobe. Mr. Norobe, the floor is yours, sir.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I agree with my fellow board members. This project, uh, is aligns with the, the proper, the zoning ordinance of that property. However, you know, uh, I am only in favor if the four conditions that have been listed by DPD can be met as far as screening the parking area, uh, presenting a site plan, erosion control, and snow, snow storage. So if those four conditions can be met, then I'll be in favor of granting relief to this, to the petitioner. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Norobe. Um, sir, I think you heard the comments of the board. Um, I also think this, this application for the variance to construct this, um, uh, commercial structure, um, does have a lot of, um, makes a lot of sense in terms of, of this area and this zoning district. It, it does fit in with the, the character of the kind of the, the business, surrounding businesses and mixed use of housing and, and retail and, and businesses. Um, you know, I am a little, a little sad to see that, you know, one, another housing kind of unit kind of not available for the, for the general housing stock. As, as we all know, housing is, um, is tough to find these days. Um, but you know, I, I think, um, with, with you and your applicant investing in the city, uh, with this business, I, I think, uh, it only bodes well for the, for the city and for the community. And you know, I, I, I wish you the best of luck. And you know, I, I really hope, um, things work out. And thank you, uh, if you could lay this to, to your client. Thank you for the investment in, in the city. Um, and you know, I would also be in support as long as, as my colleague said, there's, there's, uh, about five conditions that are, that are, that are heard, um, that we'll, we'll, we'll read off. And if you're okay with them, um, we'll go on with the vote. And like, like some of my colleagues have said, as long as you're, you're okay with the conditions for this structure, for this variance, where I'll be in favor myself. So, um, do you have any further comments or questions before we move forward with a, with a vote, sir?
No, the, the only comment I would say is, uh, we had to, uh, continue from the last hearing. So we've actually had the comments for quite some time now. Uh, my clients have had a chance to review those and we don't have any issue. We, we, we think it was a pretty thorough report from staff. Uh, and we don't really have any issues. We would actually welcome those as proposed conditions and, and kind of continue moving forward.
Okay. Don't think, thank you for that. So we'll just, uh, we'll go forward with a motion. Um, and then we'll read the, the conditions as well. If there's no any other comments from, from my colleagues.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I just elaborate on one of the conditions with regards to resubmitting a site plan showing all proposed utilities? Uh, I would just like to include on that and proposed landscaping, including bushes, including placement of bushes and trees. I think that would kind of cover working with DPD on, on my proposed condition, but just to get us on both the safe side, they have to resubmit a new plan anyway. So, um, have that included with the, uh, proposed condition regarding resubmitting a new site plan.
Yes, that, that makes sense. Uh, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Uh, Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
Um, Sean, I just wanted to make sure that we're talking about the same side of the building. You, you had mentioned the south side that you were particularly looking for landscaping, but that's actually, I think, the street side.
That's what I mean, the street side.
Or that's, that's the west side.
I mean, the street side. I mean, it's the south side of the building. And if we're, if we're going north, north, southeast, west.
We're not though. The North Arrow, I think, is.
Okay. I didn't see the North Arrow up there. Sorry. So, um, but they, we'll say whatever.
Play the south.
Play the south, okay.
The street, just say street side. Yeah, street side sounds, is, is more, more, yeah. Sorry. I didn't, I missed the North Arrow.
No worries.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. And thank you, Ms. Callahan.
All right. Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion for ZBA twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight for variance at forty-six Wood Street, um, with the, uh, following four conditions. Condition one, that the applicant, um, shall screen the parking area from all abutting residential properties using an opaque six-foot fence. Um, and then the second one is that the applicant shall resubmit a site plan showing all proposed utilities as well as landscaping material, particularly at the street side, as well as the rear yard setback in excess of forty feet. And the third one is that the applicant shall provide, um, erosion controls, I'm sorry, erosion controls shall be checked after every weather event and repairs, and maintenance must be performed within twenty-four hours. And the last condition is that the applicant shall submit updated plans showing the snow storage location and a plan detailing snow removal and disposal procedures.
All right. Uh, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by, uh, Mr. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Uh, approval of conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approval of conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with conditions.
Member Briere.
Approved with the conditions.
Member Proko.
Approved with conditions.
Member Noroge.
Approved with conditions.
All right, so even approved with conditions. Uh, we wish you the best of luck. Thank you for coming on this evening. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
You too. Thank, thank you. Uh, moving on to, uh, next item on, on our agenda under new business, uh, we have ZBA dash twenty twenty-one fifty-two. The petition is a special permit. Um, the property located at, uh, one one four one Bridge Street. Um, the applicant is Cheryl Martin. Um, the petition is seeking a special permit to operate a dog kennel at one one four one Bridge Street. Um, the property located in the traditional mixed use TMU zoning district and requires special permit approval under article, uh, front one and for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Um, is Ms. Martin here this evening? Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Uh, please, your name and address for the record. And you want to just tell a little bit about your project?
Yes. Cheryl Martin. Address is three two five Mammoth Road in Lowell. Hi, everyone. Um, I'm the owner of Bark Avenue LLC in Lowell. We are a pet sitting and dog walking service. I'm here tonight to request a special permit that will allow me to have doggy playgroups in the rental space that I'm leasing from my office at the one one Bridge Street address. I started my company Bark Avenue in Lowell in two thousand and nine, and since then have been providing pet care for cats and dogs throughout Lowell. To date, my team and I have worked for well over a thousand pets, providing them with care when their owners are away or on vacation. Over the last two years, I have been actively seeking property to open an office for myself as my business was seeing an increase in clients. By the end of twenty nineteen, we had our best year on record. Then the pandemic hit. Business dropped eighty-three percent. Over the last two years, I have worked tirelessly with my team to maintain our clientele and to keep my employees employed. With that said, while the dog walking services were negatively impacted by the pandemic, we did see a surge in the need for doggy daycare. Many pet owners went out and rescued dogs during the pandemic. With that, however, many dog owners are still not back to work in their offices, and they're still able to work from home. This continues to keep their dog walkers on hold, yet creating a larger need for daycare to give their dogs socialization and give the owners proper time to take their Zoom calls and their meetings. As of August this year, Lowell only has three doggy daycares open for business in the city, in a city that has many dogs and is very dog friendly. The available space within these three daycares is limited and is not enough to cover the needs of our residents. Opening a fourth location would continue to show our dog parents that we do care about their pets and welcome them in our city. My business plan is slightly different than the traditional daycare. We will be hosting small-sized indoor playgroups during the day where the pups are in our space for shorter hours, then return home. This will give the owner their office time and give dogs that might not do so well in a traditional daycare setting, a chance to socialize and thrive, and in turn may help with separation anxiety when the owners return back to work. So in closing, I am seeking a special permit so that I may open my office and have indoor doggy playgroups, and we can learn how to continue to build the business as we come out of COVID and try to restructure. And then eventually we would like to search for a larger location in the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Martin, for that, um, presentation of your business. Um, thank you so much. Um, if you have no further comments or questions, we'll open up to the public, um, for comments. Um, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Um, seeing none of that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, seeing none of that portion of public hearings closed. Uh, we're going to open up to question the comments, uh, from the board now. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was a great presentation. If this was Shark Tank, I'd make you run off.
[laughing]
But it's great that you were able to survive the unfortunate, um,
Thank you.
circumstances of, of COVID. So of course I support this. Good luck to you and all, all the little ones. Okay?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Briere, for your comments. Well, thank you. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, gee, Mark, uh, I, I think I would, I think I would go into this as well. This, that presentation, um, was very, very thorough and, um, has, has me convinced that this is a great idea. But, um, you're looking maybe to even expand again.
Yes.
Uh, somewhere else.
Yes, in Lowell.
And, okay.
Yes.
So this is a very small, uh, unit that you have there in the back.
Yes.
And so you only have three dogs inside?
So the square footage is small, and I do need some space for my office.
Okay.
So the idea would be that we would continue or to try to mold into small playgroups where we have three-hour blocks, where a minimum of three dogs, perhaps more than that, because we can fit more.
Okay.
Um, but they would be there for small periods of time, and then we take them home, bring in the next three for the next playgroup.
Got it.
So the theory behind that would be to cut back on foot traffic, uh, car traffic, and to make the other renters in that building feel safe because we are bringing dogs on the property.
Sure, sure. Um, is there a size limit to the dogs that you bring on property?
Um, at this point, there's no size limit. Um, it would be more about, um, their personality.
Sure.
And how they mesh well with other dogs. And they would go through a screening process. And we certainly can pick from our own pool of clients first before we would even have to open it up to the public to bring in more. So, uh, we will, but everybody would still have to go through a screening process.
So I guess I have to ask about noise.
Yes.
And so is there an issue with dog barking, um, with the neighboring businesses?
To my knowledge, no, because everyone approved and they were all happy when they heard it was dogs moving in.
I agree with you.
Um, and we are looking at rubber flooring. Um, we have a quote right now for a rubber flooring. To be aware of the noise that could potentially happen with barking while they're playing.
Sure. Um, the petition is insulated between the next tenant, but that's all it has. It's just sound attenuation.
Yep.
Um, and so at the moment, we really don't have a need to do anything more than that because
No.
everyone seems to be on board with this.
Yes.
Okay. Well, congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I share the same sentiments. I think this is a great idea, and I'm glad that you're taking this opportunity to keep your business in the city of Lowell. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a service that's very much needed for the community. I do have a couple of questions though about, like, um, because it wasn't part of the package. Like, so it's, what is your envisioning of the layout of the unit as far as how the business is going to be? You say you're going to have an office, uh, but as far as the unit itself, and it's, I know you said it's very small, but, um,
Yep.
is it just going to be like one big area for the dogs?
I do, I do have a, a little self-drawn map if you would like to see that.
Actually, that'd be, that'd be great, if, if you have that. Thanks. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. Okay.
So the space itself is almost a perfect rectangle.
Yes.
There's no walls or dividers other than the outer walls. So we can do pretty much anything that we would need to, but I'm not planning on doing anything because I like the idea of the open floor space.
Okay. And I noticed you have a side, okay, so there's a side door. You have the, you have the ability, you have the side door in the back.
Which makes it perfect.
Because you have the end unit.
Yep.
So you have the side, okay, that.
Perfect, yep.
That is actually, one of my, that was kind of one of my concerns of the, uh, something happens, a dog freaks out or something like that.
Exactly.
Starts going.
We'll be using the side entrance, which is away from any other foot traffic or, um, the entrance to the other two renters.
Yes, yeah. Okay. That's, okay, that's great. Though, um, do you happen to have another copy of this so we can put it on the record?
We don't have it with me, no. But we can make a copy.
Okay. Uh, if you can make a copy and just make sure you provide it to.
I can email it or scan it and email it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, I don't, I'd like to, like to have that, just have that on the record that we're seeing. Because that wasn't, that wasn't part of the original package. And just we, uh, all that was provided to us was the layout of the building, layout of the, general layout of the units and, um, how, how it's structured. But now that I'm looking at it, it makes total, uh, total sense, uh, from, from that perspective. Um, and so I guess I'd like to know, like, so the structure of, um, your clientele as far as how you, how, by appointment only, I presume, right?
Yes. So what we would do is, um, it's, it would be by appointment only because we just don't want the foot traffic or the cars coming into the parking lot, um, for the reason that there's just not a lot of space.
Yes.
Um, and we want to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, although it is a walking area, people are going to see the signs that say, you know, possibly Bark Avenue, and they're going to want to know what that is because they're going to be curious. And as soon as people see that there's something for their dog, that's, that's a huge win. But we don't want to keep having people come in. So we will be, um, advertising that it is by appointment only.
Okay.
And, um, screening process.
Okay. Um, and I guess the one question, I guess I'll, I, you know, probably should have, but looking at the layout of the, the area, uh, what if the dog has to, um, take care of some business, so to say? Is there, I mean, do you, what do you, what do you go with it? Just?
Well, we would, um, take care of the dog, um, before they were to enter the building.
Okay.
Um, we have side, we have a whole area with all mulching, um, uh, that, butts against a fence. Then we have a lot of mulching on the side of the side door. And then in the back of the building, there's an entire alley, all mulch.
Okay.
So we have that opportunity.
So, so you, with your landlord, you have, you have an agreement with your landlord that you're going to be taking care of all that?
Yep. And then as long as we pick up our waste daily, which we would because we're dog walkers, it's what we do.
I'm going to see.
That, it, we're all set.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. No, great. No, it's, 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 everything seems, seems to be in her own, especially now that you provide us with the, the layout. So I know, we know where, where everything's going to go. So, um, I think this is a, this would be a great, uh, great addition to the city, a great new business. I'm glad you're, um, sounds like you're expanding your business, actually, if you're moving out of your home to go to a
Yes.
new business. And I'm hoping
Yes.
in the future, it just continues to grow in the future, be able to expand to other, you know, even further with other areas. So, uh, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Uh, the chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Norobe. Mr. Norobe, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would like to commend the petitioner for their presentation. And, uh, I think this proposal meets the criteria for special relief. I had a couple of questions. You say you're the, the landlord is okay with the, you holding, having the business there, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And, uh, it's three dogs, you said three dogs at a time, lasting up to three hours only?
For each playgroup would be three hours is what we're looking at. Um, and no more than three dogs per playgroup.
Oh, okay.
So if we did three playgroups per day, we would be looking at nine dogs total per business day. To start, I mean, that's what's, that's the, the foundation of what we'd like to test and see what works.
Good. Um, do you intend to, uh, put up a sign on, on, for your business?
I, at this time, there's a space on the sign that's already, uh, on the property. There's a blank space, and I just was going to put my business sign there. Um, I do feel that people know us at this point in Lowell, so I don't need to have too much additional signage.
Yeah, so no further questions, Mr. Chairman. I think, uh, I have no issue with the special permit.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Norobe. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is a very, very intelligent business. Um, seeing that I'm one of those recipients that work from home via Zoom, and every time I'm, I'm on a meeting, my clients hear a bark.
Yeah.
So I have a hundred and fifty-pound giant schnauzer, and everyone in the neighborhood knows his name is Shadow. So it would be a great benefit to me, especially since that's my neck of the woods, to be able to drop the dog off for about three hours, so I can have a call in peace.
Exactly.
I, I know the area very well. I, I think it's, it, it makes plausible sense. Um, I did have the question, but you didn't answer it about the signage. It's not going to be illuminated. It's going to be right in front of the, the entrance to the building. Is that correct?
Yes. Um, there's a space for the, the next business that opens there to put up their sign, um, underneath the other two that are already there.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all I was planning on doing.
That's the dentist and?
Uh, yes, and then a, a, I forgot the other one. Yep, in the middle. Yep.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I'm impressed. I'm impressed with your presentation. And I, again, I think this makes sense. Um, it sounded like you're very, you were very careful in, in your choices as far as the amount of dogs and, um, and the space. So I, I, I just praise this, and hopefully you can accept my dog after the screening.
[laughing] Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thanks, thank you, Mr. Proko. Um, Ms. Martin, I, I think I'm agreeing with my colleagues. This, this sounds like, uh, not just an amazing business, but kind of a need of the city and the community. Um, you know, I, I don't know, we only had three, like, doggy daycare. So you, you being the fourth actually makes, makes a lot of sense for one of the largest cities in Massachusetts. So, um, so that, that really fits in with the need of the, of the community and residents of the, of the city. Um, you know, I, I don't have any concerns. I think it fits in with this kind of, um, you know, this mixed use zoning district for the city right off, you know, Bridge Street. It's a very mixed, um, kind of, uh, kind of crossroad of, of, of housing and residential and businesses. So it totally makes sense. Um, you know, I, I really wish, um, you know, you the best of luck. It sounds like the business is going well. And, you know, hopefully you, you just keep expanding. And, uh, I do want to say thank you for your investment in the city. So, you know, you could have gone other places, you know, um, surrounding town cities, you know. So, so thank you for your investment in the city. Yeah.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I know my colleagues also appreciate it. Um, so if we have no further comments or questions, um, on the board or my colleagues?
I actually got one more question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Chairman, I'm sorry. Um, I, and I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify because, uh, DPD brought it up in their memo about pet grooming. There's no pet grooming except for general.
No, no grooming.
No grooming on site. Okay. Uh, just, just in. No grooming on site, okay. Just, just in, just a general, just, no, dog, whatever, you clean them up if there's something happened, but no, like, pet grooming services
Nope.
be on site, so.
No pet grooming.
Cool. And I know you said you want to do three, three dogs at a time, three hours, you have, I mean, I'm sure if business picks up, do you have any anticipation that you'd have to take on more time if necessary or?
Well, I think what we're going to do is we would like to test it with the three and see how the square footage works out, and we're following the ASPCA guidelines. So if, so, for example, if Shadow came and Shadow brought two other friends, that's a lot of dog.
Yeah.
But, so that's three, but if I had just a smaller ten-pound dog, I could do five. So it just depends on the level of how they play. Are they going to be running or are they just going to be taking a nap? So we don't know that yet. But if it does increase, which I do expect and hope that the business will continue to grow, especially when COVID and people go back to work, that we'll have to reevaluate with the landlord what they're comfortable with.
Okay, all right. No, those kind of my curious, so whether we should be, you know, limit, conditioning this, but I don't want to limit you on your business at all. I mean, I would, I'd like to see it grow, you know, but I'm sure, certainly you would too, but
Yep, the reason why I came up with the number three was because it was very difficult when you approach a landlord and tell them that you want to have dogs on the property. So for two years, we were getting turned away by different landlords because of liability. So I had already approached the landlords of this particular unit last year, and I was turned away. So I went back with a different business plan, and I said, what if we started with three? And then we'll do small play groups, and then we'll build our relationship of trust, and then we'll take it one step at a time. And they were very comfortable with that.
That makes absolutely total sense. So you can work, you work that out with your landlord.
Absolutely.
So we don't have to do anything on our end, that's, which is, which is fine by, which is totally fine by me. I just want to make sure, no. I just want to make sure from our perspective of whether or not that's something we needed to do, but we certainly don't. If you're, you're working it out with your landlord and yes, there is a lot of liability. I'm a lawyer, so I know a lot of liability attached to that. That's, I could see from their perspective why they, you know, they'd want to protect their, their interests as well, so. But I'm glad to, glad to see you, you're working this all out and, you know, I'm, again, this is going to be a big success, and I wish you the best of luck again, so.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. If we have no further questions or comments by my colleagues, we'll move forward with a motion.
I believe we just have the one condition for the layout that was submitted today to be submitted to DPD as part of the application packet.
Okay.
So, three Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA two thousand twenty-one dash fifty-two for special permit at one one four one Bridge Street with the condition that the applicants' floor plan layout that was presented tonight, eleven twenty-two, be included in the application submission. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy. Second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
I just, Chairman Peck.
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with condition.
Member Brier.
Approved with conditions.
Member Proko.
Approved with conditions.
Member Noroge.
Approved with condition.
All right, ma'am, you've been approved with conditions. Wish you the very best of luck. Thank you for coming on this evening.
Thank you.
So the one question, do you need that floor plan back because it's your only copy?
Yes.
Okay, we just need you to submit a copy of it to
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, under new business, we have ZBA dash twenty twenty-one dash fifty-three, a variance, the occupant is Mark Cabral. The property is located at one fifty-five Clark Road. Mr. Cabral has applied to the Lowell Zone Book of Appeals for variance approval for a garage constructed within the front yard and side yard setback. The property is located in the suburban, single-family zoning district and requires variance relief under section five point one and any other relief required under the Lowell Zone ordinance. Good evening, Consular.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name's Attorney Gregory Curtis. I'm at one forty-four Merrimack Street in Lowell. And I'm here tonight on behalf of property owner Mark Cabral and his wife Deborah, who basic twenty, they live at one fifty-five Clark Road. They've lived there for the last twenty years. And we're here tonight to seek a variance for the setback and the side yard requirement for a garage that was constructed on the property back in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. And he became aware of the understanding that there was a side yard and setback violation that needed to be addressed when he went to the building department, and they said the best way is, of course, to seek the variance. So we're here tonight to do just that. This property consists of a, almost a thirty thousand square foot lot that is a very narrow lot. It's only sixty-nine feet wide. It's a very long, narrow lot. And at the time that Mr. Cabral sought to get a building permit back in two thousand eighteen, he did get a foundation permit and a building permit. They were both issued. And he constructed the garage. He didn't become aware that there was an issue with the side yard or the setback until he went to close out the permit and also to look for a permit for potentially putting a swimming pool on the property. And that's when the building department indicated that he needed to address this issue of the, of the side yard and the setback. I think at the time, this was a very nice location to install the garage. It's a, it's a lot that you don't have a lot of room to move, but where he placed the garage and the natural vegetation that's around the garage has done a great deal of thought went into it. He had some nice trees in the yard. He did not want to be any closer to the house, but if he had dealt with this issue prior to development or prior to actual foundation going in the ground, he would have certainly made the required adjustments if needed. I do have a couple of pictures of the property as it is now constructed, and I'd like to just present those to the board so you can see what this looks like.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Curtis.
So when looking at the photograph, the house is set back on the right, and again, it's a very narrow lot. I did have an updated certified plot plan that I think I included in the package when I sent it in to the, to the board. There was also a couple of letters that we received, one from the director, Butter, in the, in the side yard, which is Mr. Richards, who had no issue with the location of the existing garage. And also, I had today a couple of more from the neighbors across the street that indicated they supported the petition for the variance. And again, this is not the normal way that we come before the board. Normally, you come before the board prior to doing the construction, but in this case, when he put in the foundation and he signed, they signed off on the foundation permit, he was never told that there was any issue, that there was a problem. Again, it only came up recently, back in the last three or four months, when he inquired about possibly putting in a swimming pool in his backyard. And they said that he needed to address the issue of the, of the garage. As we all know, a lot of these streets, especially Clark Road, I've lived in that area my whole life, and people think they're far enough off the street, but in reality, the street is probably fifty feet wide or more. So you're taking into consideration sidewalks and, and area that's not just the asphalt pavement, but this is a, this is a garage, there was never a garage there prior, and we don't think in granting the variance that we're going to substantially denigrate from what the zoning is. The zoning in that area, there's a lot of older homes. There's a lot of homes that are pre-existing, non-conforming. This lot is one of them. Most lots up there now, any new lots require ninety feet with maybe a reduction to seventy-five if, if needed, but it's a long, narrow lot, but it's very tastefully done. It has a lot of vegetation, mature vegetation around it that was already existing prior to the garage being built, and we don't think it would be a problem. It was a hardship for him to put a garage in that location, only because it is a narrow lot, so on the side yard with his neighbor, he has only eight point nine feet. And normally, you would have ten with a combination of twenty, ten on one side, maybe. He has plenty on the other side because he has a whole side of the yard. But he only has eight point nine, and then the other dimension is coming off of the roadway. When you look at the actual roadway and how wide the technically the roadway is, I think there's only about sixteen feet that he is off the, off the plan, sixteen point one. So that is our basic presentation. We do have some support from the neighbors. We feel that the natural vegetation, the way the garage looks, I've gone by that location. I remember when it was being built, I remember, you know, I go down that road all the time when you head down. It's a pretty heavily traveled road going down towards the Market Basket Shopping Center, and you see this garage, but, and this is later in the season. In the summertime, you don't, you don't see it even. That there's not that much to view because it has a lot of nice vegetation around it. So I'll open it up to the board and take their comments on the fact that this is a variance based on the hardship that he encountered with the narrowness of the lot and the fact that it would not denigrate from the intent of the zoning bylaw. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Attorney Curtis, for your presentation. If you have no more comments or we'll open it to the public, sir. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor. Seeing that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition. Seeing that portion of public hearing is closed, we'll open up question and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're in Belvedere, and we're talking about a garage that doesn't meet setbacks. And you have no opposition. You have actually neighbors writing that they're in agreement with this variance being granted tonight. That's an unusual circumstance for me to see on the board here, which I guess goes to say that the garage really does fit in pretty well, even though it doesn't meet the front yard setback, which is the one that I guess it misses by the most amount, which, which is thirteen feet, but I think the fact that it's turned maybe ninety degrees really kind of helps that whole situation. Also, you're, you're not backing out onto Clark Road. I imagine you kind of negotiate that driveway within the confines of the lot and are able to drive out onto Clark Road, so.
Right, because in the picture, it doesn't show up, but there is a driveway that goes down to the house, so when you're backing out of
Yep.
the garage, you can back into the driveway and then drive straight out.
Right.
So it's a, it's a pretty easy turn. I mean, it's a small garage. I think it's eighteen by maybe twenty. So it's a fairly small two-car garage, but very tastefully done. And the fact that I asked Mr. Cabral, did you have to take any trees down? He said, no, I, I placed it there because of all the vegetation we have. He has a beautiful Japanese maple in the front yard that, you know, he wanted to keep all the trees, and Mr. Richards, who lives what would essentially be the back of the garage, had no concerns when, when it was constructed. And several of the other neighbors that live right across the street that view the garage, Mr. Desmond and Mr. Gray, they, they don't have an issue. They did not have an issue. They wrote letters or signed a petition in support of it.
Right, the landscaping is substantial, but then again, the landscaping, I'm not sure how much of it is original to the lot or if it's added since you built it, but
No, the, all the landscaping has been there. This, this
That's great.
He's been there twenty years, and a lot of this landscaping, especially the trees, the pine trees, even the grasses that grow in the front, they look like hydrangeas to me is what they look like. They come up, and I've gone by there many times, where you almost can't even see the garage door unless you really take a look in there because of the, the location of the garage, but I think he's very in tune to keeping the vegetation the way it is, and it's a nice lot. It's a very narrow lot, small lot, but if you're going to put a garage on, he put it in a nice location, and hopefully we, you know, we haven't had any complaints. And again, it only came up because he was at the building department looking at possibly putting a pool in his backyard. This is a long lot. It's almost four hundred feet deep off the street. And they said, well, we need to, you know, deal with this, but it's, there must have been a little bit of confusion, to my understanding, because you have a building permit that's issued, a foundation permit. They have to come out and inspect it. And, you know, there was a plan. There was a plan delivered at the time, and this plan was updated. The plan was from October seventh of nineteen, and then it was updated just now in twenty-one. I talked to the engineer, and I said, can you please update it to make sure there are no changes? And he said, no, that's what we came up with, so.
No, I, I agree with your attorney Curtis that this does seem to be not just the applicant's mistake, but it really is sort of a a combination of things here where the application may not have been vetted as thoroughly as other applications to make sure that it was compliant, so.
Yes.
No site plan was done, so I imagine in the site plan process typically, that's when the whole zoning piece is really kind of dug into as well, but you probably didn't need a site plan for a garage.
At the time that, you know, you need to get a site plan and get before the ZBA, then, you know, it would have been a little different story, but they issued the permit.
Yeah.
And again, the side, the side yard is roughly a foot and three inches, what we're talking about. It's a setback from the street,
Street.
which is a little bit more than, you know, you normally would see, but again, you still have the sidewalk. He paved the sidewalk. When he paved the driveway, he even paved, took care of the sidewalk. It was in terrible shape. He repaved it. And you can see, you know, where the street starts by the foam pole and goes in, so there's, there's plenty of room there to, to enter in and out of the, of the driveway.
I, I don't see a problem with supporting this application myself. I, I just don't know Fran, if there's anything that we can do with the application process that we could, I don't know, if there's any, you know how we have checklists for building, you know, I don't know if there's a checklist thing that we could possibly add that basically, you know, describes the zoning review for permit applications, or is that, does that exist? For building permit applications, is there a zoning review that takes place typically?
Oh, yes, every time. This might have just been a
So we fix that maybe, okay.
But every building permit
Yeah.
is reviewed for zoning, so this may have just
Missed.
This is just missed, probably.
No worries.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I agree. Attorney Curtis said, yeah, there's certainly a hardship involved in this. The garage makes sense. The driver was originally there prior to the garage, correct? Because I see it
Driver going straight in was always there. Where you see the vehicle parked, that area was, was paved when the garage was constructed.
Yeah, it's a funny thing. So I pulled, I pulled the property up, and, yeah, I pulled the property up on Google Maps on the street view. And the funny thing is, if you pull it, if you kind of back up a little bit from, you pull it up, originally, it shows two cars parked on the side, no garage.
Right.
And then you back up, if you back up one, one house to one forty-nine Clark Street and turn it to the right, the garage is there. So it's like, there's a, there's a, this Google Street View kind of has an historical breakdown of when you have the garage there.
I think there was always an area
You don't have the garage there.
where you could park, where you drove in and you could park, but there was no garage.
Yeah.
And And again, this dates all the way back now to 2018, when the building inspector, Mr. Negro, was there and basically had to sign off on, you know, they dig footings, you have to dig crosswalls and footings to go in and where this was located, and they signed off on it, and then the construction started.
Yep.
And I think everything was done, electrical and all the other different things you need to do, but I don't think there was ever a sign off on the completed project. And as a result, you know, you need to take care of this because if Mr. Cabral and his wife ever want to sell this property, it's going to come up, and someone's going to do a certified or a plot plan. They're going to say you have a zoning violation. So, you know, it's not the normal procedure. I've been doing this a long time, and normally, you're here prior to and go through the process, but, you know, we're asking for the board to review it, and the fact that we have some, you know, it's a nicely-built unit. We don't have any issues with any of the neighbors. Nobody has complained or ever said to Mr. Cabral, "Why did you build that garage at that location?" In fact, they support him with the garage, and, you know, we hope. He's a good neighbor. He's been there 20 years. He's not originally from Lowell, but we'll take him in.
It's adopted, it's adopted home land now, right?
Yep.
So, I mean, it makes total sense, and I agree. Thank you, and again, thank you to Mr. Cabral for coming forward and trying to get this straightened out. You're absolutely right. I mean, you don't want any issues down in the future where you're trying to sell the property, and it's a hindrance because you, because this, there's apparent zoning violation. So, it's glad, it's good that we're going to try to rectify this now. The neighbors are in agreement with it, especially the Richards, who are next door, who would be mostly affected by it. It appears, I presume, there's plenty of vegetation even on the back end of the garage just green.
Yeah, there is. The back of the garage, once you drive by the garage on Clark Road heading towards Tewksbury, you can't even see the back when you're coming up. You almost have to get right onto the driveway, especially during the summer months. I mean, now, these pictures are just taken a little while ago when the vegetation is basically going away with the front, but it's very well shaded with the vegetation, the natural vegetation. And I think the colors and everything that he used on it really was a nice complement to the area.
Yep, I agree.
It's a great road. I mean, we know there's so many different types of houses on there, but they're all unique in their own setting, but it's a nice spot. He's been there a long time. He works locally, so it's great that he was able to stay in the Lowell area and construct this garage, because let's face it, he was in the house for 18, 19 years without a garage, and we know what it can be like in the wintertime, so it's nice to have a garage. As you get older, it'll pull your car, and even if you have to walk from the house to the garage, but that's okay.
Yep, exactly. So, I agree, Attorney Curtis.
Thank you.
And I think, yeah, I can fully support this variance, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Narove. Mr. Narove, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the plot plan, yeah, it is a very oddly-shaped lot here.
Yes.
So, I can see where the special hardship comes about. I don't see it having any adverse effects to the neighborhood, so I'll be willing to grant relief for the garage. I do see a dwelling on the site plan. Is that a shed or something at the back there?
I think way in the back, there's a little shed, but it's so far behind the house, you know, I've never been in the back. But again, these lots and several of the lots to the right go way back and almost, they head down towards Douglas Road. I mean, there's a park on Douglas Road, and a lot of these lots abattoys that area, but I think it's just a little garden shed that's been there for a long time. But the house has existed, and you can see the house, how tight the house is on the right property line.
Yeah, so...
When it was constructed, I think it was constructed in the '40s, maybe?
1920.
1920, you know, prior to any type of zoning requirements there, and I don't think there's 3 feet on the property line. And there are all, there's two or three homes there that are all very close together, and the only logical place you could put this garage would have been exactly where he put it, give or take. It could have been maybe a foot and a half off the property line, so we wouldn't be here for a side yard. It would only be maybe a setback, but again, we're kind of putting the, you know, the cart before the horse here, and we would have looked at that had it been becoming issue when we were starting construction.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Narove. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the fellow board members. I think this, I think Mr. Cabral was actually very mindful when he built his garage, because as you said, he built it by the trees so it wouldn't be a nice sore to the neighbors. I think they appreciated that. Again, I think it only enhanced the neighborhood, as you said, you know, who doesn't want a garage? So, I don't think there's any negative impact in this, so I would be voting in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's obvious to me that Mr. Cabral is here to do the responsible thing, and as a result, I support the petition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. You know, Attorney Curtis, Mr. Cabral, I think, you know, you're coming here and trying to rectify what is essentially kind of almost like a clerical or administrative oversight. You know, I really think the garage fits in. I think the relief you're seeking, the front yard setback is the most, you know, a dozen feet. So, it's, you know, it's, you have a lot of merit to the variance, and it makes sense to me. And, you know, this, you have a very beautiful home, Mr. Cabral. It's, you know, very well-maintained. It's a lot, all the homes down Clark Road, and you have neighbors in support of this, so I'm sure no one thought this would fit in. We would hear a lot of comments for this petition tonight. So, in overall, I think you're just trying to come and rectify an issue that would have been caught earlier on the stage if we, you know, vetted this ahead of time. So, I have no concerns, you know, and, you know, if my colleagues don't have any more comments, we'll move forward with a vote.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2021-53 for variances for 155 Clark Road for approval for a garage constructed within the front yard and side yard setback.
A motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
A second by Mr. Proko. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approved.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approved.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approved.
Member Nuroge.
Approved.
All right. Attorney Curtis, Mr. Cabral, you've been approved. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you, and have a good evening. Moving on to our next agenda item, under other business, we have minutes for approval for November 8, 2021. Do we have any comments, questions, revisions to the minutes for November 8? All right, seeing none. If we have no comments or questions for the minutes of November 8, can we have a motion for approval, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from November 8, 2021.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approved the minutes for November 8, 2021.
Member Callahan.
Approved minutes for November 8, 2021.
Member McCarthy.
Approved the meeting minutes from November 8, 2021.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approval.
Member Nuroge.
Approved meeting minutes.
All right, the minutes from November 8 have been approved. If we don't have any questions or comments by the board, seeing one, Mr. McCarthy, yes, sir?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask for an update on 610 Gorham Street. I noticed that that building, can't remember the name of the developer, but it looks like the exterior is all wrapped up, and I know that on the conditions that we placed, that we had a six-month administrative review, and I don't know where we stand with the building permit being issued, but I'm guessing that'll probably be in January, February, so we'd be looking at a six-month administrative review sometime in the summer, maybe. But just if the planning department could just kind of let us know where we stand on that. Appreciate it.
Sure, we'll look into that.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, and thank you, Ms. Sigliano. Any other comments? Seeing one, Mr. Callahan, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Fran, I just want to double follow-up on Bovier Street. I know that's coming up in the next meeting. If we've heard anything from Law Department or if there's been a follow-up, any...
Bolio Street?
Bolio Street, I'm sorry, yeah.
We've not received an official law opinion at this time.
Okay. Now, I know it's last meeting. There were a lot of members of the public that were here on that, and so it is of public interest, and I just want to make sure, just double-check. I know the holidays are coming up, and people are probably out, especially this week, but if we can just kind of poke the Law Department a little bit just to see if we can get somebody, and I understand that a little bit understaffed too, so, but just so we can try to see if we can, just don't want to waste the public's time on that if necessary, because it is the only meeting we have for next month before the holidays, so it is something, I'd like to see if we can get it straightened out before the turn of the year. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Any other comments or questions from the board before we adjourn? All right, seeing none. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn, second by Mr. Callahan. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. All right, ayes, have it. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yep.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.